It is 7:25. I will reconvene this special meeting of the WACO ISD Board of Trustees. We've been in closed session, intersection's 551.071, 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, and no action was taken. We'll move on now to item four, Reports and Discussion. Reports on purchases over 25,000. There's a written report on page three. Are there any questions regarding those purchases? All right, then we'll move on to item 4B, Presentation on Lone Star Governance: Continuous Improvement. Dr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the board, members of the public. Let the record reflect, it's 7:27. We have two things that we'd like to accomplish under our Lone Star Governance Continuous Improvement Planning. One is a follow-up from our last regular board meeting. We've actually been discussing it for the last two meetings. You can find a summary of what we're proposing for possible action, beginning on page four of your packet. And I believe that it is a summary of everything that we discussed, including the assessment screener, and I believe it looks exactly the way you requested it to look, in terms of our new goals. What we'd like to do, in the interest of time, is we've submitted it tonight. We'd like the board to take it. You can ask any questions you want tonight. I am going to ask Mrs. Benson to come to the podium and briefly explain the universal screener that we have implemented here and how we came to that conclusion, very briefly. And other than that, the board can ask any questions between now and our regular meeting. Otherwise, this will be on the consent agenda. Ms. Benson, could you explain the MAPS?
Yes.
The measurement that we're using in the zone and in the school district?
Yes, sir. Good evening. It's Dean Board, Dr. Nelson. I'm here to talk about the MAP, Measures of Academic Progress from Northwest Evaluation Association. MAP is a computer adaptive test, which means every student that takes the test gets a unique set of questions based on how they perform on the assessment. It allows us to drill down to the student and truly measure growth, because it's not a status assessment where the same test is given to every student. This actually adapts to how the student is doing. It allows us to formulate growth goals for the student, because one of the reports that we can get from MAP is a goal-setting report. And what it basically does is it allows us to see how many points the student, how many at their RIT level, how much they would have to grow in order to meet their goal for the end of the year. And this assessment also has local norms. It can be normed locally, depending on how the students do in comparison to their peers. It's also normed nationally. It allows us to look at how our students are doing compared to other students across the nation, which I think is really important for our students. We want them to be competitive, not only here, but with their peers nationally. It's based on, the test also allows us to have a RIT score. When students finish, they receive this score. It represents the student's achievement level at a given moment in the school year. The test is recommended to be given at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year. Some districts also give it in the summer. Students, when they take the MAP assessment, the MAP assessment usually takes about 45 minutes. It can take longer, because the test is not timed. And so, as the students completing the assessment, if the student is, for example, able to complete questions that are more difficult, then the student is given even more difficult questions. So whether it's a student that's in the gifted and talented program, or a student that's in special education, or a student that's an English learner, the test will adapt to that child's level, based on their level of response. It does assess the standards of Texas. MAP is aligned to the Texas TEES, so it will also be assessing how students are doing in that content at that period of time. And it'll also allow us to address their goal over time, on how they are learning the content of the Texas TEES.
So with that, I feel like we've discussed this at length, and we still have a long way to go in terms of Lone Star Governance, but I believe we're on the right track, and we've got some quantifiable data, empirical data, that we can move toward. We talked about how we felt like the goals were very high, some of them even above the state, but we're fine with that, because this board has spoken about how we need to be more aggressive and urgent in accomplishing our student outcome goals, and we accept that as well as the standard. Are there any comments or questions regarding our Lone Star Governance?
Mr. Manning?
Just one question.
Yes.
Has this ISIP program been in the district?
The ISIP program, it's been here as long as I've been here, and I've been here over three years.
It started off as a pilot from the state in 2011, and most districts embraced it then, because it was free.
Yes. It was, it came out, no cost to the district.
It has since transitioned to a, it's pretty expensive.
Yes.
But we believe in the data that we're receiving on that.
Oh, it's okay. That's okay.
I thought it was one of our staff. I was like, were we not clear about this? But y'all, you can let your cellphone play as much as you like, Mr. Manning.
Oh, that's okay, Mr. Manning. That's okay.
Mr. Manning, were you able to hear the answer while you were?
Distracted.
Having to shut that down? Did you get the answer to your question?
And I have a document too, for the board, that has information.
So, over five years, yeah.
I got a special, I can talk to you about another question.
Yeah, I don't mind telling you that ISIP is one of the programs that I think you'll see mixed reviews out there, and some people question the data that we get from it, but what you'll find is, in this district, is that we're so data-rich, I'm not sure we're even doing something with all the data we have. But it is a good dataset, and it's very quantifiable, and so that's why we've included it.
One thing that I really like about MAP, and I did use MAP in the past as a principal, and what I found as a principal that I loved about MAP is that when we would get the student reports, we would get a RIT range, where it would allow us to have a mastery level, an instructional level, and a frustration level. And then it basically gave teachers a blueprint, so like, it would show the mastery and the skills the students had mastered, and the vocabulary they had mastered. It would then go to the instructional level, and what skills they needed to be working on, and then it would show the vocabulary that would be introduced at that level. And when you got to frustration, it showed, again, the vocabulary that they needed to be working on, and those skills that we needed to be introducing to the students. So as a principal, I felt that that was wonderful for my students, because it allowed us to drill down to the student, since the student adapts to the child.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Benson. Thank you, Dr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Item B2, the WISD Literacy Program. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, you have a navy blue folder that was developed by our Office of Secondary Education. And last regular meeting, we handed you 157-page document that was our literacy plan that had been worked on for the last 18 months. For the, let the record reflect. Thank you. Let the record reflect that we will be, we're fast and furious trying to increase education of our literacy plan throughout our school community. This plan is really intended for our public to understand our focus on literacy. Teachers in WISD have been working on literacy well before this plan was developed. And a kindergarten teacher will tell you that making sure kids know their letters is, that's their life. That's what they do. And then kids, teachers at secondary will tell you, making sure kids, I say secondary, starting as early as second, third, fourth grade, kids are expected to develop stamina in writing well-written paragraphs. And for us, literacy is the combination of being able to read and write effectively is one of the definitions that we would give. We wanted to, we're not going to read all of this to you in the interest of time, but we just want to be clear that this 157-page document was not done to just put on a shelf. And what we've done today is we've tried to provide you some highlights of the plan, an executive summary. I'd encourage you to read the whole plan. But a good place to start is the tabs that we have provided for you. We wanted to make sure we communicated to the public tonight that the literacy plan was developed between campus principals, instructional specialists, special population personnel, including special education, bilingual ESL, gifted and talented, our 504 department, special programs including Montessori, dyslexia, librarians, and members of technology. All of these people have participated. Now we're trying to show our teachers the fruits of our work, and how it hopefully will serve as an organized way for us to present to the community how to make sure our kids are gaining skills in literacy, all the way up to adults. I won't go over all the goals of the literacy plan, but they are provided for you on page five. And from the goals of the literacy plan, we established on page six, a set of district literacy beliefs that were to inform and align decisions about instruction, assessment, resources, and best practices, which led to things like readers' workshop, writers' workshop, some of the things outlined on pages 53 through 55. We're now proud to report that our campuses have been able to adopt a comprehensive plan, included guided reading leveled bookrooms of more than 4,000 books, classroom libraries of 300 books for each literacy teacher, to encourage independent classroom reading, literacy interventions for special populations, writing process curriculum, and the list goes on and on. Probably one of the most difficult parts of our literacy plan since its inception has been deciding what our assessment plan will be for literacy. And we've done this, you know, with all due respect to our board governance goals, I don't believe that you want us to focus on reading just up to third grade. It just is one of the goals that we think is a barometer, a measure, of how successful kids will be from third grade through their senior year. So we've had to have conversations about how our, if you know how literacy assessment works at primary age, early childhood, we start things on the first week of school, what we call beginning-of-year assessments. That goes through to middle-of-the-year assessments, and then it ends with end-of-the-year assessments. They are both norm reference and criterion reference, depending on the assessment. And so we're really starting there, but beginning at grades, I'm going to say second grade through fifth, the assessment plan is very different, just as robust, just as rigorous, and it's multifaceted. It involves district-level created assessments, campus-level created assessments, previously released state standardized assessments, and a host of other interventions and support materials that we're very proud of. At secondary, literacy takes on a whole new complexity. And you start really having to focus on what we call the achievement gap, where you have kids in the seventh grade who are ready to write a junior-level paper in the seventh grade, and then you've got other seventh graders that are still reading and writing at an elementary level. One of the best and brightest aspects of our literacy plan involves our community support. I don't want to steal the thunder, but we have a program that is coordinated by trustee Stephanie Quarterwig, and it involves literally thousands of community volunteers each week coming in and reading, or listening to elementary-age kids read. And the data on that outstanding community program is undeniable. It is definitely making a tremendous impact. It is coordinated throughout our faith-based community, and you could talk to any city, we're considered a mid-sized city in the state, but we have more volunteers than Houston, Dallas, Fort Worth, and several other people who are trying similar types of programs. So that's just an example of how wide and deep we're trying to go, because of our partners at McLennan County Community College. We're really trying to add an adult literacy piece to our plan, which you can find in our plan as well. And the last thing we will say is, is we want to be clear that supports for special populations are addressed in individual sections to ensure that teachers understood how to differentiate for each learner. And you can see that in the presentation we have for you tonight on pages 83 through 111. And whether it's gifted and talented education, special education, bilingual ESL, no stone has been left unturned when it comes to our literacy plan. Things to come are providing avenues for family literacy engagement, to assist parents in working with students on literacy skills at home. We really want to have literacy programs available to our kids in school and outside of school, and we want to try and provide literacy programs for adults who are struggling with developing their own literacy. So we plan on having several presentations with this board. Really, the stakeholders that need to know about this plan, we haven't finished that yet, but we're going to continue to communicate that through the rest of this first phase of our plan. I'd like to commend Dr. Scott McClanahan and Mrs. Grace Benson, our Assistant Superintendent of Secondary and Elementary respectfully, also our Chief Executive Officer of the Transformation Zone, Dr. Robin McDermott. I know she shares our commitment to the development of literacy in our Transformation Zone schools. And the last two ladies I would like to recognize that have been part of this movement that we call literacy are our English Language Arts Elementary Coordinator, Mrs. Donna Trigg, and our Secondary English Language Arts Coordinator, Mrs. Donna Morgan. The two Donnas, as we call them. So we'd like to, so the last thing I'll say before I turn it over for comments and questions is that we've put together the framework of this plan. It's 137 pages. We've given you some key pages, but we welcome the board's leadership, guidance, and I guess feedback on what you've received so far, what you feel is missing, ways we can, we can get to a higher level of consensus and collaboration. And we just want you to carry this concept of literacy being our priority. We would just hope you'll engage as we have engaged, because we believe it is a very special part of our plan. So at any time, if you want to have special presentations, just know we're trying to align the district's literacy philosophy, our instructional practices, and our materials to ensure that all students are reading on grade level by third grade and remain on grade level to be college, career, and military-ready. So that is our presentation on literacy for this evening. Any comments or questions from the board?
Ms. Teakell?
My thought was, on such a thorough plan, how you're going to see that it is implemented on campus, and what are the objectives that you're going to set, and then see whether or not you are meeting those throughout the school year.
May I respond to that, Mr. President? Thank you. Your point is excellent point, trustee Teakell, and what I would say is, is that developing a literacy assessment plan has been a tough task, because elementary campuses have a certain way of answering the question you just asked. Secondary, it changes a little bit. I can validate that at this point in the school year, we already have certain datasets. They are district-level assessments on reading. They are previously released STAR tests that we've given. So you think about that. If we give a previously released STAR test in English 1 in October, think about that. Most of the curriculum hasn't been taught yet. But we're in there teaching kids how to read. There are certain books that have to be read, certain writing skills that have to be developed and tested on by the time they finish English 2. So we have periodic assessments, to answer your question directly, that help us gauge, is our literacy plan being used effectively? And it's not the only way. You know, one of the things is, you know, we really want to increase some stakeholder input. So I want parents to say, yeah, it's definitely a focus, blended learning. We want people to be able to log on to our website, and because of our website, be able to access some of our six-figure programs that we've invested in, Accelerated Reader, I think it's called Smarty Ants, Achieve 3000. So those are some of the measurables, and we get reports on those weekly, about how many kids have logged on, which campuses are logged. We have campuses that have 5,000 kids, or 5,000 entries on Achieve 3000, which is a reading, writing, math, social studies, science, technology curriculum. We have other campuses that have only 200 entries. So if you have one that has 5,000, and one that has 200, it's a very easy conversation with the one with 200, because they're not embracing, because Achieve 3000's in the literacy plan. We've had to do some things like expanding the number of minutes that we spend on reading each day. And so, you know, that's something you can go in with a stopwatch, and you can measure on master schedules. So there's lots of ways to assess the implementation of this, but ultimately, periodically, we assess our kids in reading and in writing, and sharing those results with our principals, with our teachers, and with our public is definitely part of our plan. The last thing I'll say, which is very sensitive, but it's very true, is we want to be clear that we're not trying to have a literacy plan for the concept of performing well on standardized tests. That is absolutely not why we believe in literacy. Reason why we believe in literacy is because it encourages kids to be more creative. It encourages kids to be more engaged. And our curriculum has to rise to a level of where it's not just sit and get and do multiple choice, read a passage and tell me what the main idea is. We really want kids to read all different types of genres, everything from nonfiction to, I don't know all the terms, but the point is, is that we want to be clear that this is not being driven by improvement required standards, or this is not being driven by standardized tests. This is, we want kids to foster a love of reading. I'm 45 years old today, and I love reading one book a month of my choice that I pick. I've been doing it since I was 11. And so we want everyone to have that love of reading, and it's something that cannot always be punitive, cannot always be tied to some kind of test, but I guarantee you, the kids that fall in love with reading by third grade, there'll be a direct statistical correlation on how they perform in SAT, ACT, think about careers of the future and things like that. So periodic assessments, though, is a specific answer to your question about how we're going to monitor the implementation of a thorough plan.
Yeah, go ahead.
So my thought on that is, you could still have campuses that don't implement the literacy plan, but yet whose assessment data is still good.
Good point. We'll take it.
And so I'm wondering, how are we, as a board, going to look back when we look at the data in the end on our reading, to know that these are the, which one, what part of this literacy plan worked and what didn't? And then for our sake, it's really, I think, you know, the board, we have control over the budget, and if there are parts of this plan that we need to talk about budgeting to support, we need to be able to say that the assessment supports that part of the plan. For example, I saw in here, teachers' classroom libraries. And as a parent, I, you know, I noticed there was a great disparity between teachers' classroom libraries.
Sure.
And so if that's part of this plan, for example, you know, an assessment isn't going to really tell you whether or not that was an integral part of this plan or not, but then how are we, as a district, ensuring that each of our classrooms have libraries that support the teachers?
Yeah, that's an excellent point. So I think if you allow us to put together some responses to that, I think that that's a legitimate question that with some research, we can show you our ideas. So I think about the budget. We've already reorganized a lot of our, what were regular purchases, to implement some of these new ideas. But we need to show you what we did away with, what we've done now, and what we plan to do in the future, and allow the board to make some decisions on if it really was effective. You know, another thing I'm thinking about, just listening to your outstanding comments, is I'm wondering if we really talk to the teachers, what they would say are holes missing in this plan? What are gaps? What are things that really need to be revisited? Because I know I speak for everyone who's an author in this, like, speak up, you know, because we welcome that feedback. We understand it's not, we're not done yet.
You know, with the work that Stephanie's been doing, with all of our volunteers.
True.
I'd like to see some sort of collaboration between that project, although it's part of the plan. If that, if our volunteers also understood how important these particular pieces are, and what they can do to support it. For example, if they're in a classroom and they take stock of that classroom's library, if you have someone who's already committed enough to volunteer to read to a child as often as these folks are, they're probably going to very easily be happy to see if they can't add a few books to that classroom's library. So I was also thinking about whether or not our Education Foundation is aware of the plan, and whether or not it, I would like to see that their grant committee make sure that their grants are made with the literacy plan in mind, with the focus on knowing that these are the things that we know make a difference in the lives of children in literacy. And Education Foundation, could you help us as you evaluate your grants?
Great idea.
So just more ways that you can take the plan and infiltrate it, not only in our campuses, but then to our greater community.
Well, that's great. We'll bring, follow up on all of that.
Are there questions, comments? Ms. Quarterwig?
So I actually was thinking through some of that, too, because we were talking about books. I was reading through the plan and making sure that families have access to books. It's talking about how kids in lower socioeconomic brackets don't have equal access to books. And I just was thinking of Junior Leagues, push that they've been doing at the, in looking at, I think this is a great example of kind of that collaboration, cross-community collaboration, when they do stuff with Family Health Center, and the Family Health Center prescribes reading to the parents for young kids. to the parents for young kids. You know, I think that program is piloted at several clinics, but that's something that could really be, you know, maybe Junior League, I don't know.
I'm sure they would.
I, I think this is the kind of collaboration that we can, obviously. Waco SD is very committed to the students in this district and committed to their success. But I think that there are a lot of partners in the community who are willing to also commit to the success of these students. And I think just kind of taking a more 3,000.
Sure.
From 3,000 vantage point to 30,000 and kind of seeing who really is doing this. But I also wanted to say, when I looked on here, the, you know, Antioch had been doing Stars Book Clubs for the past five, six years. We've been primarily using Antioch volunteers and kind of collaborating and coordinating those efforts at two elementary schools. And we've noticed great gains in reading, kind of over this five-year trajectory, you know. And so, you know, I was reading this, and I was like, wow, it's kind of not really descriptive of what it is now. So, you know, I can give you kind of a little blurb.
Yeah, you want, you want to rewrite it?
Yeah, I might rewrite this because it's more, it's more, it's more, Antioch is basically saying, hey, we're going to facilitate any congregation that wants to use this framework. We're going to support them. But it's really a collaboration of 41 churches within this community. So 41 churches coming together, saying, yeah, we're going to go ahead, we want to, we want to step in, we want to help the kids in this community. And I think that's pretty unprecedented in terms of the collaboration from, from our faith community wanting to step up. And so, you know, I kind of wanted to knock us down a couple, Antioch, knock us down a couple of pegs to kind of really.
Emphasize.
Emphasize, give honor where honor is due to these 41 churches that have said, hey, we're going to work together for the good of our community and for the good of our students. And so, really, really, Antioch is just serving the collective church.
Well, it's important to know, not only 41 churches, but in Waco, Texas, I mean, it's, it's different faith. It's not all God Bless Baptists, but it's not just all Baptists. It is every faith that you would want to represent. There are Spanish-speaking churches that go to our students and read in Spanish. So it's a very powerful, community-uniting activity. And we'll clarify that in our plan. And take, we've received calls from faith leaders all across the country interested in how to replicate that model. So I agree with you that we want to give honor and credit where credit is due, but Antioch is the, I want to say godfather, but I don't think that's the right term to use.
We're the servant of all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know, y'all want to be on the bottom, man.
Please roll.
But I do think, and I think you make a valid point about.
You do.
The community, cross-community, I mean, that was frankly why, you know, Ms. Cordewig and I were asked to produce, presented the No Needs Among You, Among Us Conference, the Nene Conference, on that very issue. And in your efforts to form the, the coalition of faith leaders in this community and then in the implementation, and then we were asked to do another presentation to the Baylor School of Social Work and the Truett Seminary that Josh Caballero and I handled, but again, because it really, it's getting attention that there are multiple congregations that have all aligned and said, we want to do this collaboratively and have maximum impact. And the numbers are unbelievable.
Yeah. And if I could say one more thing, you know, this, I actually have gone into several campuses and have seen the, forgive me, because I don't know exactly what they're called, but the, the leveled readers.
Yeah.
Yeah, the leveled library. And these are, I mean, there's just shelves of these books, and they're, they look really interesting, you know, that principals have said, hey, you can read this. But we've kind of said, hey, we're going to bring in different books so that we have even more kind of variety, genres, different, different books for the kids to read in case the teachers want to use that one. We're not kind of double-dipping. But, but I, I mean, those books, they look really, they look wonderful. They look super engaging. And I, if I was a teacher, I would definitely use them.
And, and I will make sure, and, you know, with collaborating with you, that we rewrite that part. And, and I, I do want to say something. I think it's so beautiful and humble, what you're saying. We've met and we've talked about so many things that you, you're doing in the community, you know, through the collaboration with, with other churches. And I want to touch back on what Dr. Nelson said and bring it back to you and what you are doing. A, a book, we learned to love it because of the experience we've had with it. And so it's the people that are around us that help us love that book. And so I can remember, I remember as a child loving the Island of the Blue Dolphins when I came to the United States because my teacher would read it to me. And so all of your volunteers, all the children they're reading to are going to remember those books. And that'll become a special book to them. And so you're instilling that love of reading through what you're doing.
Yeah, it's a positive association with reading. And there's 839 people from churches.
That's incredible.
In and throughout, reading with kids. So I think that, that's kind of where the honor needs to be, is the people day in and day out, week after week, consistently meeting with a kid.
839 volunteers, but they're impacting over 1,600 students across the district every week. I mean, it's, it's a powerful deal. And you're right, that love of learning is what we're trying to cultivate. But you've also got the data to show you're having an impact on, on the scores. I mean, there, the, only two schools in the county who's, or in the Waco community, whose scores have gone up consistently over the last five years are the two schools where Stars Book Club were, were doing their program over the last five years. So it's, you got the data and as well as that, that personal connection that you referenced. It's really powerful.
So.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yeah, Ms. Teckel.
So Scott can the mic. I don't know. You have to ask.
Yeah, I have an answer for you. One of the things, one of the things that we've done to ensure, one of the things that we've done to ensure that the plan is actually being implemented is we have spent time in five principals' meetings so far this year, going over parts of the plan to ensure that the principals thoroughly know the entire plan so that they are able to speak to it with their faculty as they're doing walkthroughs to make sure that it is being implemented, that they understand the frameworks, you know, how the reading and writing workshops are set up so that they know what they're looking for. We've done organized walkthroughs with staff, principals, instructional specialists, coaches, where we've gone from school to school and walked through classrooms with them so that we could have conversations about what we see that's working, what aligns with what we expect and what doesn't, so that they're more familiar with what that looks like.
So then my next question was, I continue to hear G2 students' parents, especially at the middle school level, complain that their kids aren't reading. That once they get through elementary and they master that AR program, that sixth, seventh grade, the kids have stopped reading the volume and the number of books that they were reading at the elementary level. And so I'm wondering what we're doing, especially at the Atlas Academy, to make sure that this, this should be central to, to that program, of course, but, but that's where I've heard concerns expressed. The kids seem to stop reading by the time they get to middle school. So how, how is this plan a, a change in that?
You know, Ms. Teckel, it's a phenomenon that if you look into it, now, you know, I'll go get, we're going to do some research and bring that back to you. I don't know why there's this huge drop-off at secondary when it comes, Accelerated Reader is such a perfect example where kids can be accumulating thousands of points. And then those same kids get to middle school, and they're actually reading, they're just not doing the Accelerated Reader. It's, you know, so I say they're reading. We really have no documentation. So let us examine that. I think the Atlas program should have an even more robust literacy plan.
So if you look in the actual plan, in the Gifted and Talented section, you will see that we actually have an Advanced Academics reading list of, of books that are aligned to the AP English Literature Test that have been scaffolded back all the way to sixth grade based on interest in reading level, where there's a, a span of lexiles for students that, that might not be their area of giftedness, so they might be a little bit below grade level, to ones that are several grade levels above grade level. So that at each grade, there is a span of books that we expect students to be exposed to. In addition to that, you know, we, we run the challenge that we want to be able to assign summer reading and expect students to do reading outside of school. But when we face the reality that not all students have access to all of those books and that we have a large, a large population of students that are facing economic hardship, they can't go out to Barnes and Noble and buy the books that we need, and that we might not always have, you know, 120 copies of a book to give out and then make sure that we get them all back so that we have them for the next group. It just becomes a, a difficulty. So we are continuing to look for ways that we can get around that, that we can make sure we have books that students can read, we can give them access to them if they can't afford to get them. But I know that at Atlas, we have had summer reading lists, whereas at the high school, we've still not been able to get around to really establishing that. But there is an expectation of the students to be reading. However, when we face reality, we know that at the end of the day, principals are held accountable for STAR scores, and that's going to trump reading. And so, and that is the sad truth, is that, you know, if I have a choice of giving kids time to read in my class or working on STAR, they're going to choose working on STAR.
So?
Other questions, comments? All right. Thank you, folks.
We'll follow up. And we welcome any comments or questions offline as well. May proceed. Oh, go ahead.
On item 5A, are we all through with the literacy?
We are.
5A is the Memorandum of Understanding with Region 12 for Head Start Programming. Dr. Nelson?
Mr. President, I'd like to table this item.
Okay, so we're not going to take action this evening? All right, then we will move on to next week's consent agenda. If you have any, I'm sorry. Oh, you're right, week after next. We're not meeting Thanksgiving. If you have any additions or corrections to the minutes, just get those to Ms. McCutcheon. Are there any questions on the budget amendments? Item C is the Health Insurance Consulting Services. Mr. DePuy, did they include the information you wanted in the packet?
Mike.
Mike.
Yeah, a couple of questions, I guess. Either some numbers in there concerning prescriptions. And I'm, I guess, I'm trying to imagine, I've, trying to imagine where that came from. Where the, the numbers, the demonstrated savings, I guess, that.
The prescription, the pool?
I see how you could know what you spent. I'm trying to ima, I mean, and we're saying we saved this much, compared to what, I guess would be the question.
Are you talking about the, the prescription discounts that we've received through Express Scripts because of the partnership that other districts have?
Well, it seems to imply that had we not done this, we would have paid X.
Yeah, we, I mean, we do.
And that's the part that I can't see how you know, I guess.
Right. We do get a, a discount because Gallagher has several districts that are.
So we're getting a discount off of what all of Express Scripts, other customers pay?
From what I understand, the prescription cost. So the fact that we're using Express Scripts as the prescription distribution vendor.
It's a better deal.
Right.
I've got that part.
Yeah.
Better deal.
Do you want to answer? Okay. No, go ahead.
Maybe you can answer this one.
I think he might be able to.
Thank you.
What's that compared to? I mean, you've got, you know, you've got a list of prescriptions that you buy, and we know that we buy 20 of these, 30 of these, 40 of these. The price that we pay over here, we can read the invoices, I can pull that price off, but.
Right.
We've got this other comparison column.
So the comparison column, it, it's a comparison column against what the estimated discounts were for those prescription drugs under the old arrangement, which would have been UnitedHealthcare, versus what the new arrangement is with Express Scripts, which is a, is a pool that allows deeper discounts that we're able to achieve with Express Scripts because many, many school districts have, are into this education collective. And the estimate is, what is it, 470, $475,000 is the estimated savings that the district has realized by being in this program.
Off of what we would have paid.
That's correct. If you were not with that, we estimate that the district would have paid $475,000 more than what was paid.
If we'd stayed with United, the old prescription benefit.
With UnitedHealthcare's pharmacy plan, that's correct.
Who would ever stay with United's health plan, prescription services? I mean, I guess I'm sort of, I mean, I don't know what our total spend on prescriptions is, I don't know, three or four million? Is it, is it that much?
Uh, that, I don't have the numbers in front of me. That sounds about right, give or take.
Okay. And I, from my memory, we're saving $400,000 a year, so roughly 10%?
Roughly.
On prescriptions. I'm trying to imagine how, okay. With those kinds of savings available in the market, I guess that I'm, and it's, they cut that deal for like, school districts only? Is that?
No. Gallagher has a, a pharmacy program of which school districts are joining.
But lots of people have pharmacy programs. I mean, that's, you know.
Sorry, say that again, I couldn't hear that.
Lots of people, lots of people have pharmacy programs.
That's correct.
That's all I'm saying.
That's correct.
I mean, it's not, it's, in fact, I mean, Express Scripts is what, $100 billion a year company? They do business with a lot of different people, right?
They are, if not the largest, they're the top two in the country.
You're right, right. Huge outfits. They do, I'm just saying they do business with a lot of different people.
That's correct.
I'm trying to, I guess, what I'm being told, and I, I know that, the way it's being presented is this is a unique offering.
Mm-hmm. We believe it is.
And to the tune of 400 or $400,000 a year.
Correct.
That we can't get anywhere else.
We don't believe you could. And, and the reason for that is we have schools that are going into that. And to the extent more schools join the program, the discounts improve. Express Scripts is giving deeper discounts to the extent there's more volume.
Okay. Well, I mean, okay, compare your pool, let's say, UnitedHealthcare, how many people do they insure?
I haven't.
Nationwide, they're huge. I mean, I'm.
They're, they're the single largest insurance company.
Right. But they can't drive as good a deal.
I, I. They may not share it with the employers.
Okay. Okay. Question two.
Mm-hmm.
And what, I guess I was really optimistic about originally with, I think what Nick had probably presented to us, was a negotiation with local service providers. I mean, you do have, locally, 1,500 people is a pretty good pool of customers. And there seemed to be some optimism there that he'd be able to negotiate some deals on our behalf. And I'm sort of wondering, that seemed to be a likely spot for Gallagher, Gallagher to possibly, I don't know, use a hammer to get us something we, we couldn't have anywhere else.
Right.
I'm, I'm wondering what's happened there.
Well, I think that the first, the first, this is, that's, this is a step in a process. And so the, the first step was to move the district to a self-funded arrangement, which was done. And we see, and we believe that through, I think it was the month of September, there's roughly $600,000 of savings against budget. So we think that's a good thing for the district. Secondly, and kind of dovetailing with that, was the Express Scripts piece.
Be in education, but okay.
The, the Express Scripts piece is, is the second part that we think is, is helpful towards that. And then down the road, we would go into some direct contracting with local providers. We don't believe we're at that point right now. That's down the road.
Okay. To be clear, and I want you all to understand the reason I'm asking these questions, we did, we picked, you guys are the highest-priced bidder on this deal. And I'm trying, I, it's important to me that if we're going to make that decision, that I pry back, what are we actually getting for our money? And again, and I'm going to say even the, the $400,000 estimate on the prescriptions, I, it's a little bit hard, it's not real, real tangible. I mean, as you said, you call it an estimate, and I'm still not entirely sure I understand. I mean, United would have sold us those prescriptions for, if we had just bought their network and gotten their prescription plan along with it. I guess you all have the data to know. I guess you all have the data to know what they pay for individual prescriptions. It just seems a little far-fetched to me, but have you got other people on their plans? You see what they're paying for prescriptions?
Mm-hmm.
Why would you do that? Get them on Express Scripts? You're doing them a disservice.
Well, it's their choice whether they want to do that. Understand, by moving to another pharmacy vendor, I mean, there are trade-offs there. One of the big ones is, you have two different ID cards for members, and some districts don't like that. They think it's confusing for members. You have a medical card, you have a pharmacy card, right. And so, they don't want to do that. They want to have everything under one, so to speak, umbrella.
Hell of a way to spend $400,000. Okay. I think, so, I guess what we will be seeing soon is some, I mean, I've, we had a 10%, basically a 10% increase over what, the first year? Is that, is that what we're facing? I haven't, and I may have some more questions, I guess, when we get to the, yeah, the stop-loss deal.
That's what he's talking about.
Okay, okay. Yeah, 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 right.
Which, I understand, may or may not be, just depending on your, claims drive premiums. I mean, there's no, whether you self-insure, whether you fully insure.
That's correct.
You can have bad luck or good luck on a given year, there's really not a lot of control over the health of your covered population.
Just to the greater extent.
Hopefully, over the long term, you could improve choices and lifestyle and some things like that.
Correct.
Unless we start negotiating, I guess, better deals from service providers, there's kind of a little we can do there. What I'm wondering is if we're, how we're going to alter our benefits offering, or is there, is there a strategy for how we're going to alter our offered plans? In an attempt to try to keep healthy, well, we want, we want people making healthy choices, we want them making economic choices, good economic choices. And in the long term, hopefully, save the district money, so that we can afford more in salaries. That's what we're after.
So, that is also one of the...
I'm sorry to drag you all through this. I know, everybody loves health insurance, but...
That is one of the areas that Gallagher has worked very closely with us on, is really looking at our plan design. We, as we mentioned previously, when we took the health insurance proposal to the board, the district contribution, the various plans that we were considering, one was the RICHES Plan, the PPO Plan, which was really having a big impact overall on claims utilization. So, you know, we, as administration, decided that we needed to do something to help alter some of the behavior and utilization. So, this year, starting in January 2019, we will no longer offer a PPO plan.
At any price.
Right. It will be HMO, employees are having to choose primary care physicians, they will have to have a referral to go to a specialist. Again, we're trying to help employees with, with management of their, their healthcare by having a primary care physician. And also, we will be rolling out some wellness initiatives this year as well.
Okay. Well, Mr., thank you, so can you speak to a little bit about how we came to conclusion to recommend the highest bidder? Was there some kind of...
When we did it back in 2017, so, yeah, so, when we were looking for a consultant back in 2017, we knew we needed a consultant that had experience in moving, well, we felt like we needed a consultant that had experience moving a school district from fully funded to self-funded. Gallagher had that experience. We have been very pleased with their services. They, we have monthly meetings. I think you've even attended one or two of those meetings, and they bring the information that we feel like we need to make decisions. Some of them are hard decisions, in fact, a lot of them are, because, again, we know that we need to continue to educate our employees and to help them make better decisions regarding their health, because ultimately, if, if that doesn't happen, we will continue to see high claims utilization.
Was this procured through our Office of Procurement? And Ms. Trotz and Ms. Davis are comfortable with the recommendation?
Honestly, I've been very pleased, because actually, I was with the two districts before this that were self-insured, and we had, I had had experience with a consultant that didn't know school districts, and experience with those that did. And Region 19 in the El Paso area created a co-op and hired their, their consultant did not have school district background. They had a million dollar in the red program in a year and a half. So, I really feel like it makes a difference when your consultant has school district background, because they understand the patterns of usage with health insurance. It's very different from other industries. I've been very pleased with the quality of what we're getting.
Thank you for that, Ms. Davis. Is Gallagher the only company that submitted a bid that has school district experience?
From what I've rec, well, as far as moving a district from the fully funded arrangement to a self-funded arrangement, that, I mean, they, there were three, at that time, we had three of the consultants come and present to us, and they were one that had experience with school districts.
They had the most.
They had the most experience, right.
The most districts.
I think it's in there. At the time, they were in the process of moving four other districts.
Right. I can, I can speak, so, in the state of Texas, as I'm sure most of you know, the vast majority of school districts are in a program called TRS. And I believe there are 59, 58, 59 districts that are not, that are on their, on their own. And Gallagher works with, I believe, 32 of them. So, we have, and that's what we do. We do public entity work in a lot of school districts. So, we, we feel very proud of working with the school districts and knowing how the process works, and can also give you insight as to what certain school districts do versus other school districts, and how it can impact you.
I wonder if you put your price up so high because you knew you was going to get recommended for renewal?
Yeah, it's been the same.
This is, it's the same price. We didn't, no prices was raised. It's the same price we've had since inception.
Thank you for the clarification.
They were highest for the year. We're still...
Trying to help you, Mr. DePuy.
Okay, yeah, no, I appreciate that. Tell me how school districts are, other than the initial signing up, and I suppose the contracting, how is insuring school districts or a population of teachers different than the rest of the population?
That's kind of a broad question, but it's essentially, school district...
You're claiming some expertise in that, and I think...
And we have it.
It's part of our selection.
So, school districts have a couple of different things that are different than other entities. One of the major ones is, you're off in the summer. And with school districts being off in the summer, the majority of the times, when people are not working, it allows them the opportunity to use their benefit plan, medical, dental, pick your, pick your coverage, really. So, there are patterns, and we can plan for those patterns. Secondly, with school districts, many times, when, when a health plan, when rates are set for the year, school districts contribute the same amount of money for every employee, regardless of number of dependents, throughout the year. Not all other entities do that. Other entities will do a percentage, they'll pay 80% of the cost, 20% for employees, others will pick dollar amounts, whatever that looks like. But school districts are pretty consistent in having that flat amount, so you can do good benchmarking against what do we do versus what do others in whatever the district you, or the region that you're in, also geographically and statewide. Additionally, we can, it also, we know what plans are being offered with school districts, so you can compare, how do we, Waco, size up against the Dallas's and the Austons and the San Antonio's, Houston's, whomever?
In terms of plan offering?
Correct. All of that. And even, plan offering, number of plans, types of plans, carriers, deductibles, copays, all that kind of thing.
It sounds like the most important part of that, to me, would be planning for the cash flows and the funding during the summer months.
And budgeting a process, and budgeting a process, too, because not all, all employers select their benefits and go through the process like public entities do in schools, private sector in particular.
Okay. I'm not sure I see the distinction there, but, okay.
All right. Are there other questions on the renewal for the health insurance consulting? Mr. Manning?
Every year, we try to give teachers, all employees, a pay raise. It seems like every year that a lot of that's eaten up by health insurance. Are we going to ever break even, or are we going to?
No.
I mean, you know, like I say, I mean, are we going to have to give a pay raise and have it eaten up by health insurance costs again?
We are working on helping our utilization in our district, and that was one of the reasons why we had a plan design change. We knew that the PPO plan was killing us, pretty much to say, no pun intended. So, hopefully, I mean, really, we just got to, we got to get a handle of the, on the utilization. Now, there can always be a bad year. In fact, the predictions are that one out of every five years could be a bad year. You just never know when that one year is going to be. That's why we have stop-loss insurance. So, hopefully, I mean, we can't make any promises, but hopefully, we continue to educate our employees on the importance of them taking care of their health. Again, with us having to tweak the plans like we did, hopefully, we'll get to a point where we will not be in the red as far as utilization.
There you go.
And making the employees go to the private, have their own private doctor, you hoping that that will decrease?
It's, well, we're, I mean, it will help the management.
Management, okay.
Right. Of how they use their health plan.
And just, I want the record to be clear, I mean, as the premium's gone up, we've raised our employer contribution every year. I mean, it's not like the insurance premium goes up, and we're only giving them a raise that covers that. I mean, we're, we're increasing our contribution towards that premium in addition to the pay raise.
Yes. That is, that is correct. And we've, we have done that for years.
This requires a board vote, but I'll just leave it alone.
We're hoping, though, we will get to a point where we won't have to continue to increase our district contribution, and so, employees can enjoy their pay raise. This year, employees were able to enjoy their pay raise.
Well, an increase this year, with us going self-funded, is substantially less than if we had stayed fully insured.
Right.
We were looking at 30, 40% increases fully insured, whereas we're looking at 10, 15% at the most. So, I mean, there's steps in the right direction, that's what we need to do, but we need that extra guidance to make sure we're in the right direction and continue down the path to lower that increase.
Other questions, comments from the board?
I have one, please.
Yeah, Ms. Sykes?
So, with regards to wellness programs to offset the experience increase, are, are we looking at that program in terms of utilization?
Yeah. In fact, I'm going to have Sue hand this out to you. Here are some of the initiatives that we are rolling out, so you'll have that information. We just closed out open enrollment last week. Prior to open enrollment, we had informational meetings at every campus, attendance was mandatory. So, employees learned about the changes in the health plan, they also learned about the wellness initiatives that we are rolling out in Waco ISD. Our flu shot clinics have been very successful. We've been offering flu shot clinics for the last few years, probably last, I don't know, it's been a while, maybe almost even 10 years. But we are seeing more participation. And, I mean, when, I will tell you, when we have the informational meetings with our employees, we are reminding them that it's important that they take responsibility for their health, because if they do not, then we will continue to see the excessive utilization and premiums increase. So, at some point in time, we have to just take responsibility for our health and make better health decisions.
Other questions or comments?
I have one real quick.
Ms. Fordway.
Just looking at the wellness initiatives, I noticed annual flu shots, you, you know, have about over 500 flu shots. Is there any way we could potentially partner with, I don't know, the health district or other, maybe, clinics that we could get nurses who could come and administer flu shots to every employee? I mean, is that something that we're look...
Let me speak to that. I'm sorry, Mrs. Patel, would you like to answer that question? I apologize.
That's fine.
Well, I just, my experience has been that the issue is not getting clinics and partners to help us administer them, there's only so many flu shots available. And so, Waco's already turned in their requests, we talked to the health department, they've already requested their dosage, you know, for this area, but it's not enough for everyone who wants to get the flu shot. So, it's even worse in some other urban areas, but we can look at any ways to give more flu shots to not only our staff, but our students as well.
We, and so, we had a flu shot clinic at every campus this year. Walgreens is who we partner with, we just have the best rate with Walgreens. So, they went to every campus, and we publicized that information and had, had quite a bit of participation.
Yeah, Ms. Sykes?
In that regard, I mean, would you consider that pretty low utilization of the flu shot offering?
I would love to see more. There's just some people who refuse to take a flu shot.
And to that point with Walgreens, do we use any kind of voucher system or anything like that, that they can go to a Walgreens with a voucher?
Yeah, well, they don't even need a voucher, they just go with their health insurance card, and they can get it free at Wal, they can go to Target, that any, really, any pharmacy provider that's on the, the network, they can go HEB, get a flu shot for free.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Other questions, comments?
Just one observation. I want to be clear, what, the reason I'm, again, questioning this stuff, and I'm not, let's go to the McGriff Siebel and Williams bid for $60,000. We're spending $45,000 a year additional for Gallagher. The implication of what I'm seeing, the numbers in the agenda item, is that McGriff Siebel and Williams wouldn't have us on an Express Scripts plan. I'm not sure I buy that logic, but what I want to see is some more creativity in tweaking our offering, or plan, or incentives to, I guess, possibly alter behavior and choices so that we genuinely do realize some savings where it counts, and that's on the utilization. And I, I don't know how you get there, but that's really where you guys, as capable, smarter than everybody else, more expensive than everybody else consultants, in my mind, are going to earn your keep. Because I'd rather, I mean, I'd rather spend the money on copy paper and make it easier for teachers to get. I've, okay? That's, that's, that's where I am. All right.
Other questions or comments? All right. Questions on the bid award for local retailer supply services? Mr. DePuy?
Yep.
Do you have questions?
I don't know, I'm thinking, you, you assume, and I think I was spit on the subject.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Teak.
Angela, please, I'm gonna, I, to me, his prescription offering sounds like a cataloged bid, or at least is useful.
So, my question is, we did one bid, one RFP that netted 90 vendors, and I thought we were done. And there wasn't a need to reopen the process for another year. we were done. And there wasn't a need to reopen the process for another year, but yet a second RFP was published, and another forty-two local vendors were added to the list. And so that, I, I guess, you know, originally, the message was, we do this once a year, we've already done it, we have ninety vendors and we're done. But then I was surprised to see in our packet that another RFP was sent out, and another forty-two local vendors were added, so.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the explanation?
This is actually our third turn. This, when we issued the bid three years ago, we stated in our bid document that the vendors that were awarded on the first go-around would be valid for three years. If the district felt the need to add additional vendors, we would add version two at the one-year anniversary date. Those new vendors would only then be approved for two years. The bid again said we could do it on the anniversary date, which was this last time we issued this bid. Now, these vendors are only going to be valid for one year, and then next year, the whole process starts over again. So the vendors that are awarded tonight, or not tonight, but next two Thursdays from now, their bids are only going to be valid for one year, and then we'll start the process all over again. We do this so that our local retailers do not have to wait three years to get back on the bid. We're, as I said last board meeting, we're trying our best to get as many local retailers to participate in doing business with the school district as possible. And we felt that doing this incremental annual additions is a benefit for employees, is a benefit for our communities, and it's a win-win solution.
I'm confused. So the ninety vendors on the original-
Well, that's accumulation of the previous two. I do not have it separated for you, ma'am.
Oh, I wouldn't ask you about that. So the, but we, shouldn't we do that annually? Shouldn't we, shouldn't we publish annually?
We do publish annually. I advertise in the newspaper annually. It's like a brand-new bid. It's just we don't lose our previously awarded vendors. We get to keep them for the three-year term. And then round two, they're only good for two years, and then round three, they're only good for one year, and we start all over again.
So are the local retailers that are on this list available to bid on any, or to offer a proposal for any expenditure now?
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Pettis?
Is this, how you doing things? Is this a policy, local policy, even school policy, or are y'all just making things up while y'all go up?
Well, it's state purchasing law, sir.
It's what?
State purchasing law, the way we issue our bids.
I'd like to see it, please. If you could send it to me?
The purchasing law, local government code, I'd be glad to send it to you.
If you would, please.
There you go.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trapp.
E, the, any questions on the bid award for special education professional services? Mr. DePoe, did you have a question on the bid award for stop-loss insurance? Is that what you, I thought you said that earlier, that you had a question about the override? You want to pull your mic, please?
Best and final offer. The other thing, I guess, that I'm a little bit, you got, we got two people bidding on this. Is that all? I mean, it, that is a surprisingly small number of willing participants, it seems.
I don't think that's surprising. I think that-
And I think that's, I guess I'm more addressing that to our consultant. Is there- Well, I mean, it's, we got Sun Life, United Healthcare, and I assume that y'all recruit those folks and?
So the, so the process is, the request for proposal goes out to the marketplace, and we give the information, our claim history and so forth, and then let the, the marketplace essentially know that it's out there, and they can choose to chase it and do what they need to do. With, so much of it, as you mentioned earlier, is driven by claim experience, and what came back were the quotes from both United Healthcare and Sun Life.
Y'all get on the horn and call these guys and find out, hey, I wish we made sure you didn't miss this, but would be, you know?
I think there were eleven proposals that were, or IFPs that were sent out.
Gotcha, okay. Six, six of no response. Three specifically sent it back to you saying we're not interested. Okay.
I mean, I'm not surprised, because when, even when we would go out for bid when we were fully insured, sometimes, we were lucky to get two to three proposals back. So I'm not, I'm not surprised about the-
Now, usually, what we're seeing these days, we've bid many stop-losses for other districts throughout the state, and we typically see two, three, fours high, a number of respondents. And I think it's a couple of things. One, it can be the, the time of year, January one, it's the busiest time of year for vendors, so they, they pick and choose what they can, what they can get. Secondly, if the claim history is high, they may not want to bother working with it and, and go after it. And so there are some entities out there that they don't like to bid on public business. They just think collectively it's a bad risk, whether it's a school, a city, a county, I, I've seen it. So they, they don't even chase it. No, it's just they think the industry is, it's a high, large claim industry, so they don't even go after it. It's just, it's like an industry decline. They don't even want to go after it. Or if it was private sector, it would be something different.
United Health and Sun Life being amongst the only two that'll, I mean, y'all insure all these districts. Is that, your experience is fairly typical across all of them?
Sun Life has quite a bit, United has quite a bit. We see a lot of it with the, the major carriers, like, like the Blue Crosses, the Yatnas and such, they have it. There are some other ancillary carriers that, that do have stop-loss coverage. Sun Life is one of the bigger ones in schools in the state.
But most of reinsurers are just, are just not interested in?
Correct.
Okay, do we also, is it, is it, is it United Network that we have?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got, and they're, they're providing the reinsurance. And then who's our claims administrator?
United Healthcare.
Okay, they've got all three. Huh. Did they bid on a full insurance?
Didn't ask for it.
Okay. We did, we didn't, we didn't-
In the past, so in, in the past, prior to 2018-
We did get bids on, on fully insured this year, though.
Previously, we were with United Healthcare when we were fully insured, and they were coming back with the forty, thirty, twenty-five percent increase.
I got you, but since we've made the leap, we don't go out for bid on full insurance?
We did not in 2019. That is correct.
When we went out for bid for health insurance this year, I think we did ask for fully insured. Yeah, we did. Yeah, that's what I thought, and the increase was-
Sizable.
Sizable. Yeah, that's what I thought, close to forty percent.
Okay, now the rest of this gets, uh, let's see, I guess the only other thing, I hate to do this to y'all. Then don't. I have to. The fully, okay, on the $150,000 specific stop-loss, our maximum exposure, what page is that on?
That, look on page ninety-nine. Maybe that's what you're- So maximum claim exposure would be fourteen million, three hundred thirty-two, one twelve. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Page, I'm sure it's not one oh four?
Page ninety-nine, on that second line. So you'll see UHC current, and then UHC a hundred and fifty thousand. And if you look on the one, two, three, four, fifth-
Fifth column.
Maximum claim, claim spending.
Looking on the screen up there.
Oh, page nine.
Right there, right there.
That's where I was, where y'all started directing me elsewhere. I hit it. Okay. United, one fifty, maximum possible is fourteen, three thirty-two. I'm sure that's not expectations?
The fourteen million dollar number?
Well, I'm just looking at, okay, maximum claims, funding plus fixed cost.
So that's the maximum liability of claims plus the premium for the, the coverage?
Right. Why would I expect with the $200,000 specific limit, our maximum potential claims would be higher than with the $150,000 specific limit? You don't have to take me through the math on that. I'll have to think about that one for a while. Is it?
I can explain why.
Okay. Run that past me.
Okay, so the maximum claim exposure is the grand total claims that would go towards that for the entire district, not just those with large claims. At the $150,000 level, that is the number of grand total claims, up to a hundred and fifty per person.
Right.
If you move to 200,000, then it's an additional 50,000 per person.
Right.
So in theory, the number could go up.
Seems like it could. But it's lower in this example, or at least in this, what we've got posted here. We've got fourteen two versus fifteen three.
But, but, but the fourteen million two is a combination of the claims plus the premium level. So the premium went down. Premium went down by almost $300,000. But the, the maximum claims only went down $100,000.
Okay, but the, I mean, just based on those two, it seems to me like the $200,000 specific limit might be a better choice.
I'll explain, I'll explain.
But you have to look at expected, which is what you're actually- anticipating, playing the odds.
So on the right-hand side of that grid, if you look at the third column from the right, there's an estimated expected number of claims. So, so how many claims, if you took the risk at $200,000?
Right.
How many claims do you think are going to hit that, and from our, our studies?
Right, fewer than if you had it at a hundred and fifty.
So you, but you would be hitting eight people more, about eight and a half, I mean, it's fractional, I understand.
Eight people more if you go to 200,000?
You would, you would have eight people hit 200.
Right.
So you'd be paying 50,000 more for eight people.
Right.
So that's an additional potential $400,000 risk to the district.
Right. Four hundred and thirty, and then 270, and that's-
And so on, yeah, at a 175, that's correct.
Okay.
Now, it's a guess, have you, if-
Again, I'm just going back to the max out-of-pocket, or what I'm understanding would be the maximum liability, fourteen two with the 200, and fourteen three-
Correct.
With the 150. And why is it counterintuitive to me that the 200's higher?
Let me explain.
Okay.
So look at the fourteen three. So that's a combination of claims plus the premium for the coverage. If you subtracted out the premium for the coverage, you're going to get roughly a little under $13 million. Okay? If you go down to the $200,000 level, you've got fourteen two, and you subtract a million, now you have 13 million. So it's a little bit higher, about a couple hundred thousand dollars higher. I'm just kind of doing the math in my head. But it's about $200,000 higher at that level, on claims, not the premium. Remember, the premium went down $300,000.
Right. Okay, so I should- Okay, let's move, I, I, I'm, I'm still not there, but we need to move on. I've, I've lost all my friends. I bring gum every meeting.
So that they, so that they love me, and it's, I've just spent all my capital.
Mr. DePoe, do you want to pull either of those insurance issues from the consent agenda in two weeks? Or do you want to make that decision later?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay. All right. Item G is the bid award for temporary labor services. Any questions on that? Really? All right. Uh, item, okay, Carrie? You're kidding. Item H is the bid award on the implementation grant partner for the Transformation Zone. Ms. Teckel?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm curious about why we need to spend $300,000 to pay someone to help us with the implementation phase of the Transformation Zone that now is six months down the road.
I would say while Dr. McDermott, may I respond? While Dr. McDermott makes her way to the podium, I would add that part of the requirements of the grant are that we have a partner that helps us think about how we're implementing the grant. They've, and so, you know, I agree with you that most of the heavy lifting by design has been done by a host of local leadership, including myself and Dr. McDermott, doing a, we're gonna say, I want to say a majority of the employee work. But Empower Schools has been a good design partner in helping us think about what we have proposed, and I believe that they can serve as a, a high level of support to make sure we honor what we submitted to the state of Texas to earn this grant. You have anything you'd like to add, Dr. McDermott?
Yes, sir. Specifically addressing the timeline, we did not think that we needed to go out for bid on it. I asked about it when we got the NOGA for the grant, and we had a response that said that you, you don't have to, we can give you the paperwork for it if you, if your district opts not to go out for bid. So I asked for the paperwork, and then we were asked to go back and look at our initial process with them, with the initial waiver from the state. Did that waiver cover the two, both the planning and implementation? And I couldn't find where the waiver did cover both. And so at that point, without a letter from TEA saying that we didn't have to go out for bid, and without coverage, I just said, we, we don't want to take any risks, let's take it out for bid. And so I think my understanding is, right now, we're the only district that did, but I didn't have an assurance that we wouldn't, that we, that that risk was not going to come back to the district.
And then, does the grant require a, a partner?
So when we wrote the grant, we were under the impression that the grant does require the partner. What we were not told was how much, so the, the other, right now, the other implementation grants that were after ours have a 20% requirement of the overall award amount.
Has to go to the partner.
Has to go to the partner, but we didn't have that, and we didn't have to give 20%, even though the $300,000 is a large dollar amount. It's smaller than what the other districts are giving. So, by my means, we've already paid Empower Schools. So that was the first time that we worked with them in the planning process. That was a condition of the grant, and it was 50% of the grant. Which is how much? It was 260,000 for six months. So they've already been paid 260,000? Yes. And this is going to be an additional 300,000?
And this is going to be an additional three-hundred thousand?
Yes.
And are they, if they, well, I'm not going to say they've been working for free, but, so they've been working on the implementation phase without any agreement in place till now?
So, with the work on the implementation phase, the design partner was written into the grant. And when, we got a pre-award letter from the grant that said we could begin that work starting at July thirteenth, was just a few weeks after the first grant ended. But we didn't have the official NOGA until August. No, no, not August, we had the official NOGA last month. And so, although we had the agreement from TEA in writing to begin working with them, we, we didn't have the official award letter from TEA.
Do we have a contract with them?
This is the contract with them.
There's no contract in our packet. Is there a contract?
Okay, so...
Can you get that in the packet?
Yes, we can get that in the packet, yes.
And who's, who signs the contract?
Ms. Travis.
Ms. Davis.
Oh, that's right, because it's over fifty thousand, Ms. Davis.
I'd like to see the terms of the contract before next week, for sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure.
We'll provide it for the whole board.
Other questions on the implementation grant partner? Mr. Sykes?
Dr. McDermott, you mentioned two-sixty's been paid so far, three-hundred thousand for the first year, but isn't there another two-hundred thousand for a second year?
Two-hundred for the next year, yes.
So, total, to be clear...
Total for two-and-a-half years, seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand. Well, and if we were required to follow suit with the other districts, it would have been a full million. Yeah, I know.
I don't really know what difference that makes to me.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Other questions?
So, let me make clarification, are you sure it's a total of seven-sixty, or is it just a total of five-hundred?
Five-hundred for this year, you asked since the start.
Right, I am trying to get clear on how much we've paid them since the start.
So, it was two-sixty on the original grant, the planning grant, and then there's three-hundred this year for the implementation grant, and then two-hundred next year.
Two-hundred for the next year of the implementation grant.
And then what's the grant amount?
Five million. Right, right, and then if you go back to the...
Right, so the two grants combined, we get five-point-four million, correct?
Yes. So...
Let me answer that, let me answer that. I think that, first of all, Dr. McDermott's in a tough situation because there are very strict parameters given by the Texas Education Agency for this partnership. I think the piece that, and I don't want to claim to know my board as well as I, I think I know them, this is, this is a, this is a complicated matter. And so, we're committed to doing the work, the partners are welcome to join us in our efforts. We agree that it is exorbitant in terms of the fees that we're paying, not only in Empower Schools, but lots of financial-related matters. But one thing is for sure, that Dr. McDermott and I are committed to keeping local control of our schools. And it has required us to jump some hoops, bend but not break on some of our beliefs about taxpayer dollars. And your points are well-taken about our partner. And I'm just proud that Dr. McDermott has been able to coordinate all of their input into a way, I, you know, I don't mind telling you in front of our public that I value Empower Schools, but we've kind of been marching to our own beat in Waco ISD, and we've been in close contact with TEA, so we're not trying to do anything that's outside of their ideas. But we were working on this well bef, we were working on transformation in Waco ISD well before we applied for relief from Senate Bill eighteen-eighty-two. And that's, that's respectful to the state, that's respectful to our partner, Empower Schools, they've been wonderful. They've treated us with dignity and respect and professionalism. But even if they weren't at the table, yes, we would still be doing this critical and urgent work. And so, there's a couple agenda items there from time to time that involve the Transformation Zone that are a little vague and elusive, but it's tied to our relationship with TEA. And if this board is so uncomfortable with the amount of money we're spending, then all the more reason you should expect us to improve the student outcomes in our schools, because that is the quickest way to not have to encumber these types of financial relationships that are tied to Senate bills and House bills that have afforded us this relief. So, that's where we're at. It's a, it's true, there's a lot of books, it's a lot of health insurance that we could use, salaries, we could put that in. So, yes, the budget is a, is a serious issue. It's been, while it's well-coordinated, I know I speak for Ms. Davis, we're not prepared to talk about employer contributions to health insurances next year, salary raises, none of that, none of that today. But it's Thanksgiving, so let's just have Thanksgiving and let us keep working on it.
Other questions on the grant partner? Questions on the Spring Break Academy compensation? Questions on the Principal Preparation Mentor Program stipend? Questions on item K relating to the report to Asbeck? Item L, I don't remember discussing, are there any questions on item L? Any questions on the local criteria for tax non-graduates or the Lone Star Governance? All right. Any other announcements, Dr. Nelson?
I know, we just wanted to remind everybody that we are in school all the way through to the end of the day on Friday. It's a regular school day for us, and we're excited about the lessons that our teachers have created. We want to encourage our kids to be in class, and we want everyone to have a restful week, next week off, celebrating Thanksgiving holidays. And we're thankful, we hope that everyone will consider what they're thankful for. And I know I speak for the employees of the Waco Independent School District that on our list of blessings is the Honorable Board of Trustees for Waco ISD, and we hope, we wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, that's it.
And with that, we will stand adjourned.